Okay, we're good.
Want to try again? Do you want to start again?
If you want to start again, yeah.
Okay. All right, take two. All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our May 23, 2022 Select Board meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. If everybody could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I have to say in my tenure, that's the first time we're going to take two.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment this evening? All right, we are going to push our report on the MVRTA shelter locations to our next meeting. So I will entertain a motion to go into licensing.
I shall move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Over to you.
Thank you. Okay.
Let's go to the licensing tonight.
So first is an application to, for an entertainment license for Tavern on High. We, they'd come before us last week, or was that last week? Gosh.
Two weeks ago.
Wow. And they're doing their outside form, and part of that was they wanted to expand some of their entertainment offering, including live music, and so we have their application here. All signed off, no conditions, building, fire, police. I don't know if anybody's here to speak to that, but please, come on, guys.
If you have any questions, our plan is basically just offering live entertainment, no dance floor. It's just acoustic, one, two people, outside as well as inside. There is a floor plan that I believe you have that shows the locations on the outside. No residents would be affected by it, and the latest it would run is 10 PM, even though we stay open later than that.
Okay, good.
Did you say acoustic only?
Yeah, I, there would be, someone would be singing as well, but it would not be a band.
Okay.
Yes.
I look at 10 o'clock outside, and that gives me a little bit of concern. We love it there. I think it's a great addition to the community, but I feel like we might need to think about that a little bit.
Especially with the new apartments, too.
Yeah, honestly, on the license, the amendment, the entertainment license says it would be until 11:30 on Thursday and Saturday.
I thought that that was asking just what our business hours were. And it also asks for, you know, TVs on there as well, so TV obviously stays the entire time we're open.
Not as concerned about inside.
Right, it just didn't offer like an option for live entertainment times.
May I ask the, but aren't there apartments that are adjoining to your, where you are?
They're in the rear. They're not.
Not in that front?
Not in the front where the patio is. The patio is all business, no residential.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have, we currently have music on speakers outside as it is. There's no issues with that.
So to the best of your knowledge, there's been no calls made to turn it down or police stopping by and saying, you gotta turn that down?
No.
And you would expect the volume level to be similar?
Yeah, I mean.
You might hear, know that we hear from people a lot about.
Right. I mean, we're a restaurant. We're not trying to be loud and boisterous. It's really more just to appeal to like light music while you're sitting there at your table, eating as a family. And, yeah, like I said, no dance floor, which I think typically changes a lot as far as, you know, your.
The noise level.
Right, exactly, yeah.
The environment you're creating.
Right.
I have to tell you, town manager and I were at a meeting today, and they talked about, what town was that in? That they, they had people, they opened up dancing in the parking lot.
Andover.
It was Andover. Okay, thank you, so.
It would be cool.
It would be really fun.
Yeah. And it was a big hit.
Maybe an occasional special event we could.
We would love to do something like that on a Sunday with the landlord, where we could use, utilize the island out there and.
Be fun.
Big tents and everything.
I think it's, my personal feeling, it's, it's worth a try, and let's see how it goes.
Couldn't, yeah, I would agree with that, willing to.
We all need to just lighten up a little bit and have some fun.
Can we move the license to that until 10 o'clock? So if we grant the license the way it's written now, it's gonna go, it's gonna be licensed till 11:30.
As long as you just make it live music only until 10, but then the rest of the entertainment, you know, TVs would be until close.
Yeah, it's under the music to perform section. Yep, sure.
And hopefully there will be no issue, but we will be back in touch with you.
If there ever was, we'd just adjust, instead of going from seven to 10, we would just change it from six to nine or something like that.
So perfect.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval subject to the amendment till 10 o'clock.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Have fun.
We sit for the vote this time.
You guys don't want to stay.
Thanks, Ash. Have a good evening. Okay, our next is an application from Deborah Ingles for one day all alcohol liquor license for the wedding reception and event at, event attendant at Smolak Farms on the 18th from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and a request to waive the police detail. And let me first say again, distressing news, but relieved that it was not more significant in impacting.
It was, we actually had a wedding Saturday, and it was a lot of hard work, a lot of teamwork, and they did an incredible job. It was flawless. It really was. The Smolak staff did a great job. They worked very hard, and it was very successful, so.
That's fantastic, because there's no do-overs for weddings.
Exactly.
Well, there shouldn't be any do-overs for weddings.
Trust me, it was very hot Friday. It was very hot. It was really hot Saturday.
Very hot, so hot, yeah.
But we, you know, we have a very happy bride and groom, and that's what all that matters.
Good for you. Thank you for doing that for us.
So.
I think the whole community's heart sunk when you said, fired Smolak, like, oh, my god.
And no one was hurt. That's the most important, you know, lives you can't replace, stuff you can't.
We're a fire department, too.
Yeah, and you know what? They were wonderful. They were really great, you know? I don't represent, I'm an individual vendor, but being on site that morning and seeing everything take effect. I mean, Ashley Piazza worked extremely hard, and she deserves a lot of, a lot of good accolades for that. She really did a great job.
But the good news is, I mean, every building's important, but the house, the barn.
I know, and they just redid the bridal suite, the whole events office. They didn't want to work. They really did. They're constantly upgrading and making it beautiful, and just to see anything happen, but they'll, they'll bounce back.
They'll be fine.
They're tough cookies over there, so.
So what's happening on the 18th?
So the 18th, we have another wedding, and as of right now, it, I guess the game plan is to move forward under the tent. That's all based on what happens with demolition of the bathrooms and the office that was destroyed. So if not, I think that's where I would send something stating that it's being moved from the event, original event tent to the field where they did it. I don't know that until I get, you know, authorization from Ashley. And I would just send them an email if that would be just to give you a heads up.
Yeah.
We still do everything as normal, you know?
Everything's all signed off. All looks good here. Any other thoughts or comments from?
No. Okay.
We'll take a motion otherwise.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hope it all goes off on the 18th. Well, right.
Thank you.
We didn't, sorry.
Don't waiver the police detail.
Yeah, we didn't vote on that. Do you want to? I'll make a motion that we waive the police detail for the.
I'll second.
Prior, prior vote.
Yeah, I appreciate, thank you for picking up on that. It's pretty much been our, our habit, which is for these sort of events. So thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's a five-zero. Thanks again. And lastly, we have a discussion regarding 64 Main Street and just the status of its license there. So Madam Town Manager, maybe you could give us a quick introduction?
Sure, so as the Housing Commission knows, the board can decide after a hearing to cancel a license due to lack of use. And so far, this license has not been acted on. I would advise you to get a legal opinion before moving forward with those steps. And so if the board would like to consider that, I will move forward with getting an opinion from KP Law so that you can be prepared to start moving forward with that as well. There is currently zero all alcohol packaged store licenses available. We have a quota of seven. The 64 Main Street license is not a special license, so it would just go back into the regular license pool.
Have you heard from the owners at all, or?
I have not heard anything. We'd be happy to reach out and see if they're planning on acting on the permit at all. I do know that they do have, they did have building permits pending.
They're gonna expire, though.
Yeah, they are going to expire on July 12th. No substantial work was, was done on those permits. And additionally, they had put a food permit in as well, which I believe was rejected, and they had not applied for a new one. And so we certainly can reach out, we'll get that legal opinion, and then come back to you at your next meeting with kind of a course of action.
I think that sounds like a very good idea, because we don't want to do something just to have it kicked out again.
Certainly not.
Like to remember when they came before us, there was kind of expectation that there'd be some movement on it. I think it's fair to give them opportunity, but we are kind of up against a, we'll say, a municipal deadline here. So I think it's fair. Does anybody have any other feelings around that?
No, I think it's appropriate to get a legal opinion and get some guidance. It usually doesn't happen. This is not something that happens very often. Yeah. This doesn't happen.
I think people will not act on a license, so.
Well, thank you. There's a little bit of time. We hope.
So if there was reconsideration, it would just, license would go back into the pool, we'd go through that process again, advertise. Would it be, I think we've set up a process to advertise a date when they should submit their application for the license, and then it goes through, first to middle that was complete is the one that's considered.
Right, right.
Because it's in the public interest.
Yes.
So if we receive a legal opinion between now and the next time we meet, at that point, would be scheduled a public hearing for after that? Or can they happen?
We could do it, we could certainly do it concurrently. You know, your next meeting isn't until, isn't until June. But I also would like to just.
But if you think it would take more time.
Yeah, and I'd like to have a chance to at least get, try to get in contact with them as well, just to see what's going on. But we can certainly, you know, there's no reason why we couldn't at least notice the public hearing so that if we did want to take action, we could.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. If they say this is basically a no-go scenario, then let's put the fish back in the pond. If we've got response back, then that gives us some direction. We can decide then, so I think our options still are open.
And a lot of time, if, in my experience, if someone hears that you're considering sending the license, they may just say, oh, I didn't even think of it, and give it back, which couldn't have us avoid all of this in the first place, so we'll, we'll be sure to make that contact.
That's, that's a.
Thank you.
Nice way to handle it. Well, that takes us through our licensing agenda, so with that, we can move back with a motion.
I move to close the meeting of the North End of Our Licensing Commission. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Right?
We did have a public. We did, and I missed it? Where was I?
No. It was take two.
Do you want to do a third? We should do it for a third take.
Even though we had to stand here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to new business, and we are going to talk about the agreement between the town of Andover and our firefighters.
So as you know, the fire department has ratified their contract for a term from July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. The COLA is 22, 1.5, 23, 1.5, and 24, 2%. They, like all of our other unions so far, have added Juneteenth to their list of paid holidays. This new contract will bring equity for the EMT stipend as well as the holiday pay, and as you know, we are trying to bring equity to all of our contracts. We previously had had some benefits that were different for people hired before 2012, people hired post-2012, and we're trying to end that practice. There will be a new maximum step of 2.5%. We will be rounding that firefighter maximum step to $66,000 in fiscal year, effective July 1st, 2023, so fiscal year '24, the EMT stipend will be increased to 10%. That is tied to leaving civil service, which we will vote on at the May 2023 town meeting, which feels weird to talk about since we just got to the May 2022 town meeting, but start us off getting ready. And additionally, we are capping the consecutive numbers, number of hours that a firefighter can be assigned to the ambulance. Currently, there is no limit. It will be capped at 58 consecutive hours for public safety reasons. And we added some extenuating circumstances language to why a firefighter may not be able to complete the academy within one year. And that's the whole thing. Appreciate your help. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we look forward to that on the 10th.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming.
You've been very busy lately.
All right, we have another request to use Mass Ave, Andover Street, Abbott, Marble Ridge, Salem, Milch, Chestnut, and Osgood for the Fourth of July road race.
How are you? Are you annual road race? I said, we're having our annual road race.
We're back.
We're back.
Yeah, we're excited about it. I think it's gonna be great. So two-year layoff and right back in it.
That's fantastic.
It's great that you guys are keeping this tradition going. I know it's bounced around to so many different organizations, but when you guys picked it up, it just kept, like it was seamless. It just kept going, so thank you.
Yeah, it's been, it's been awesome, so we're excited about it.
So it's the 5K?
Yeah, just 5K.
Okay, and is it the kids' run, too, or no?
Kids' run, I'm sorry, yeah, kids' run and 5K, yes.
And the kids' run is by the common?
Yep, so it's just under six tenths of a mile, just around the corner, so it'll be good. Yeah, definitely, depending on the weather.
Are you looking for volunteers, too? Do you, do you have that?
Yeah, so we, we've been putting that out through social media, et cetera. I'm not sure, we'll, I'm sure we'll have what we typically have. It's always the same people involved, so for the most part, but yeah, we'll have a large group of volunteers.
I usually get Andover Street and Chestnut in one corner. Shady there.
Yep, that's right.
You know the good spots?
Seniority.
Exactly.
So if anybody wants to volunteer, they can just reach out to you?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Okay. And where to sign up for the race?
Right, if you go on the Booster Club website, it's in there. It's a shared document, Google Share, I believe.
Excellent. All right, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second.
All right, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we look forward to it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, we have our meeting minutes from May 9th, 13th, and 17th. Wow, we met a lot in May. Does anybody have any amendments or questions or changes?
I do, Madam Chair, I'm looking at the minutes that were posted in the agenda for May 9th, and I'm only seeing the minutes from the working session. I don't see the minutes from the regular meeting. Did I miss that somehow? Do? Let me just, maybe I missed it. Let me look again.
Yeah, they're further down.
It's a little.
It's a little weird, because it's like, yeah.
Oh, there was a gap?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I missed it. And scroll far enough. Oh, there they are, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And, great, I'll move approval of the minutes from open session, May 9th, May 13th, and May 17th, as written.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we don't have any old business. Over to the town manager report.
I just have two quick things. We do have two very important positions in town posted. One is town council, and the other one is our town planner position, so Dan Beckley is only with us through the end of this month, sadly. So both of those positions are currently posted. Please share them through your networking groups, because we're really looking forward to adding to the team. And we're also currently seeking two members of the Board of Health, and that's a pretty major commission, and we have two vacancies. So, you know, please share that. We've, we've actually had some really interesting applications come in so far, which I'm very excited about. This is a great time to get new people involved, and so we do have two vacancies on the Board of Health, and we are looking forward to interviewing those people soon, so those are my two things.
So the Board of Health, the board position?
My board, yeah, yep, yep. So the two of them, I'm, I'm excited to, I mean, the breadth of the people who have applied so far is so impressive. And if you think about it, they've been at the forefront of everything going on for the last two years, making really tough decisions for the community. So it's a really important board.
It is a really important board, especially all that we've been going through.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably need a break.
They probably do. I don't blame them in the least. It's always sad to see them go, though, because we've really had a fabulous commission over the last 18 months, so those are two big losses for us, so. But we're gonna get great people, I can tell already, so we're looking forward to it, and that's it. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could say good evening to one of our residents, Mr. William Dargan. He is a very fine gentleman who calls me and says he watches all of our meetings, so he said, he wanted me to say hi. So hi, Mr. Dargan. Thank you for watching our meeting.
We do have people watching. Oh, we do. Oh, we do.
All right, any select board comments, updates?
I would just like to say that at the, oh my gosh, what was, what's the group we were with? I want to say.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. Our town manager did an absolutely fabulous job, to the point where people were coming up to me and saying, wow, North Andover's really doing a lot of great stuff, and I heard it over and over. So it was a great speech, and you were just jam-packing it in, and people were just really impressed, so thank you for delivering that on behalf of all of us.
It's exciting. Hopefully we get some new businesses attractive. We had people coming up to us after saying, you know, can we have your card? I'd like to hear more, so.
Yeah, if that really did happen, it was great.
It was great.
I can't remember that happening to that degree.
Yeah.
It's exciting, yeah, it's very exciting.
I would like to give a shout-out to Jeff Coco and the Festival Committee and Emergency Management for running a very successful sheep shearing festival. It was great to have it back, and I think even despite the heat, it was a good turnout. They worked really hard to keep people safe and had water for anybody who needed it, and all kinds of extra tents from the farmer's market, things to just make it run as smoothly as it always does. So thank you to everyone who makes that such a great community event.
And the sheep and the dogs cooperated. I thought we were gonna get there, and there was not gonna be any sheep or dogs because of the heat, but now they were, they performed just like champions.
They wanted to be sheared.
Yeah, I'm sure they did, yeah. Really, they were getting in line to be sheared.
Well, I'd just like to say again, we had ourselves one heck of a town meeting, and, you know, Madam Chair, Town Manager, and really the entire, everybody involved with getting the information out, the level of detail, the patience, was just phenomenal.
Okay, and is it the kids run too or no?
Kids run, I'm sorry, yeah, kids run and five K, yes.
And the kids run is by the common?
Yep, uh, so it's just under six tenths of a mile, just around the common. So it'll be good. Yeah, definitely, depending on the weather.
Are you looking for volunteers too? Do you, do you have that?
Yeah, so we, we're, we've been putting that out, um, through social media, et cetera. I'm not sure, we'll, I'm sure we'll have what we typically have, it's always the same people involved, so for the most part. Yeah, we'll have a large group of volunteers.
I usually get Endover Street and Chestnut in my corner. Shady there.
Yep, that's right.
You know the good spot?
Seniority.
Exactly.
So if anybody wants to volunteer, they can just reach out to you?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Okay. And where to sign up for the race?
Uh, right, if you go on the Booster Club website, it's in there. It's, um, a shared document, Google Share, I believe.
Great, excellent. All right, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we look forward to it.
Perfect, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right. We have, uh, um, meeting minutes from May ninth, thirteenth, and seventeenth. Wow, we met a lot in May. We did. Does anybody have any amendments or questions or changes?
I do, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the minutes that were posted in the agenda for May ninth, and I'm only seeing the minutes from the working session. I don't see the minutes from the regular meeting. Did I miss that somehow?
I have all.
Do?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it. Let me look again.
Yeah, that farther down?
It's a little.
It's a little weird because it's like, yeah.
Oh, there was a gap?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I missed it. Scroll far enough. Oh, there they are, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And great, I'll move approval of the minutes from open session, May ninth, May thirteenth, and May seventeenth as written.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We don't have any old business. Over to the town manager report.
I just have two quick things. Um, we do have two very important positions in town posted. One is town council, and the other one is our town planner position. So Dan Beckley is only with us through the ends of this month sadly. Um, so both of those positions are currently posted. Please share them through your re-networking groups, um, because we're, we're really looking forward to adding to the team. And we're also currently seeking two members of the Board of Health. And that's a pretty major commission, and we have two vacancies. So, you know, please share that. We've, we've actually had some really interesting applications come in so far, um, which I'm very excited about. Um, this is a great time to get new people involved. And so we do have two vacancies on the Board of Health, and we are looking forward to integrating those people soon. So those are my two things.
So the Board of Health, the board position?
My board, yeah. Yep, our, yep, so the two of them, I'm, I'm excited to, I mean, the breadth of the people who have applied so far is so impressive. And if you think about it, they've been at the forefront of everything going on for the last two years, making really tough decisions for the community. So it's a really important board.
It is a really important board, especially all that we've been going through.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably need a break.
They probably do. I don't blame them in the least. Um, it's always sad to see them go though, because we've really had a fabulous commission over the last eighteen months. So those are two big losses for us, so. But we're going to get great people, I can tell already, so we're looking forward to it. And that's it. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could say good evening to one of our residents, Mr. William Dargan. He is a very fine gentleman who calls me and says he watches all of our meetings. So he said, he wanted me to say hi. So hi, Mr. Dargan, thank you for watching our meeting.
We do have people watching.
Oh, we do. Oh, we do.
All right, um, any select board comments, updates?
I would just like to say that, um, at the, um, my gosh, what was, what's the group we were with? I want to say.
Trainbird Commerce.
Trainbird Commerce. Um, our town manager did an absolutely fabulous job, to the point where people were coming up to me and saying, wow, North End was really doing a lot of great stuff. And I heard it over and over. So it was a great speech, and, uh, you were just jam packing it in, and people were just really impressed. So thank you for delivering that on behalf of all of us.
It's exciting. Hopefully we get some new businesses attracted. We had people coming up to us after saying, you know, can we have your card? I'd like to hear more, so.
That really did happen. It was great.
It was great.
I can't remember that happening to that degree. Yeah, so.
It's exciting, yeah. Very exciting.
I would like to give a shout out to Jeff Coco and the Festival Committee and Emergency Management for running a very successful sheep shearing festival. It was great to have it back, and I think even despite the heat, it was a good turnout. They worked really hard to keep people safe and had water for anybody who needed it and all kinds of extra tents from the farmer's market, um, things to just make it run as smoothly as it always does. So thank you to everyone who makes that such a great, uh, community event.
And the sheep and the dogs cooperated. I thought we were going to get there and there was not going to be any sheep or dogs because of the heat, but no, they were, they performed just like champions.
They wanted to be sheared.
Yeah, really, they were getting in line to be sheared.
Well, I'd just like to say again, um, we, we had ourselves one heck of a town meeting and, um, you know, Madam Chair, uh, Town Manager, and really the entire, everybody involved with getting the information out the level of detail, the patience, um, was just phenomenal. And, and, uh, you know, that's in the past, but I think it does really speak to the care. And, um, I think there are a lot of good resources that were generated out of that. And the thing I would say is, um, I wouldn't be surprised if some of those resources come back into play as we continue to figure out how to deal with our future here. And so having that baseline, I think, was really important and not an easy thing. And my God, you were right on it when, when the questions came. I think the rest of us are sitting there going like, okay, I'll find it somewhere in here. I know it's there. And you just had it, so.
Yeah, that, no question. There are tabs, yes.
Well-towed.
I had a front view of all the tabs. It was quite impressive.
Full of information.
All that great information.
You would rate it if we needed it. So for you to have.
Pass on the football. Don't pass the football.
It was ready, so.
It's like going designated survivor.
All good, so we were ready. Thank you.
Yes, it was very well-run town meeting.
It was. We had a very successful town meeting. I mean.
Lot of good things.
Nine new public safety officers in town. Pretty amazing when you think about it.
Yeah.
Designed for the middle school, affordable housing, the inclusionary zoning. People were, Peter Milano from the Executive Office of, um, Community Development came up to us today and said, you guys got inclusionary zoning done? That's huge. And he's right. So, you know, baby steps, we're getting there. So it's great.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just have the memorial, everybody, and hopefully everyone will come out to the, uh, the parade and the ceremony on Monday.
And I don't, congratulations to our seniors.
Yes, how exciting.
We will, yeah, we will not meet before graduation, so.
I hear they're out there with their water guns today.
Oh, it's Water Wars?
Yes, not allowed at the youth center. Rick Omen would like me to tell the seniors they're not allowed at the youth center with their water guns. But yes, I understand they're out there today with Water Wars, so.
Congratulations to our seniors, to our eighth graders, to our fifth graders, all moving on, um, this year to their next adventures. So we wish you all luck. All right, um, our next meeting is June sixth, right here. All right. That I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.